Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 7, 2013 Meeting of Glendale City Council, being called order at 6:00 PM. We will call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Live salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Friedman and the invocation by Reverend Rich Garner of the First United Methodist Church of Glendale. Please stand.
I invite you to join me in renewing our pledge of the flag.
On the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand in for the invocation.
As those who have care and concern for the city of Glendale, let us pray. Most holy God, who is the source of love and of life, we remember that we serve so that the living of the people of Glendale would be made richer, safer, more joyful, more meaningful. Remind us that we are to care for all, paying particular attention to the vulnerable and needy among us. Rekindle in us a yearning for justice and peace, and cause us to stir up in others a resolve to bring forth healing and wholeness in self, in community, in the world. Restore in us a vision of a time and place wherein we would greet one another with respect and concern, and join with neighbors and friends in creating a generous and gracious city that is home for all now and for the future. Amen. You, may we have your report?
The agenda for the May 7, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Friday, May 3, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next?
Under Presentations and Appointments, at 3:00 A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of May 14, 2013.
Ms. Beers.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. For May 14, Council Meeting, we do have a special meeting of the Council at 10:00 AM. We're doing a Budget Study Session, Director of Administrative Services Finance, Budget Study Session Fiscal Year 2012-13, and looking forward to 13-14. That afternoon for the Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. We do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council to commence at 3:00 PM. This is a public hearing, Director of Community Development. This is proposed development project, and it's called "The Link," which is to be located at 3901 through 15 San Fernando Road. That evening for the Council Meeting, we have just one consent item, Chief of Police, Purchase of Additional Software Program that allows for the online reporting of crimes through COP Logic Desk Officer Reporting System. We have two items under Action, Director of Community Development. This is regarding private right of enforcement and smoking in multifamily units, and update on distancing requirements of smoking in outdoor dining areas. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, we are going to be discussing the GWP Energy Risk Management Policy. And we have one item under Hearings, Director of Community Development. This is continued from today. It's an Appeal of Design Review Board, DRB Case Number 2PDR 1301725. It's a property located at 2064 Buckingham Place. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next item at 3:00 B is Proclamation Designating the Month of May 2013 as Older Americans Month.
Frank, this is for us.
Speak for yourself, Mr. Weaver.
Next to me here are the oldest. Says over 60 in here. Someday it'll be over 70, like it should be. Whereas the city of Glendale is a community that includes 40,000 citizens aged 60 and older, and whereas the city of Glendale is committed to valuing all individuals and recognizing their ongoing life achievements, and whereas the older adults in the city of Glendale play an important role by continuing to contribute experience, knowledge, wisdom, and accomplishments, that's us, and whereas our older adults are active community members involved in volunteerism, that's us, mentorship, arts and culture, and civic engagement, and whereas recognizing the successes of community elders encourages their ongoing participation and further accomplishments, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to allow older citizens to continue to flourish by providing recreational programs and social services emphasizing the importance of elders and their leadership by publicly recognizing their continued achievements, presenting opportunities for older Americans to share their wisdom, experience, and skills. Now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim May 2013 as Older Americans Month, and urge every citizen to take time this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. Mr. Montero.
Listening to that proclamation, that's why I was brought back. Is that correct? I wanted to have some recreation and leisure.
Yeah, 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 that, both of us, yeah.
I'm Maggie Kebaring with the City of Glendale's Community Services and Parks Department. And Community Services and Parks, along with Armenian Relief Society, is here today to introduce Carolyn Young, our senior advocate, who volunteers as a senior peer counselor at the Adult Recreation Center, who served as our president of the Greater Glendale Council on Aging, and who currently teaches part-time at Cal State LA's Graduate School of Social Work. She is going to accept the proclamation on behalf of older Americans in the city of Glendale.
So, good evening, Mayor, and Councilmembers and staff. I'm here to accept this beautiful proclamation on behalf of the 40,000 seniors who reside in the greater Glendale area, and who also provide this community with talent, wisdom, stability, and are role models for our Glendale youth. Many years ago, I chose a career path to help and advocate for older adults. And at the time, I decided that if I was nice to a senior, maybe when I became one, a younger person would be nice to me. And now that I am one, I feel very privileged that I still have the energy and the power and the time, I'm somehow retired, to still be able to advocate and help. I would like to thank the city for giving us the opportunity to have programming at our community centers, nutritional meals, and the recreational activities that keep us engaged. And to celebrate this important month, the Adult Recreation Center is having their annual 90-plus birthday party to recognize seniors 90 and older. And please join us for the special occasion that will be May 23 from 10 to 1. Thank you.
You don't all be there, because I'll feel young in that group.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At 3:00 C is a proclamation designating the week of May 19 through the 25, 2013, as National Public Works Week.
Thank you. And whoever's, who's representing Public Works? Two, okay. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas public works projects and services are critical to the growth and quality of life in the city of Glendale, and are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, through the efforts of our Public Works Department, Glendale remains a safe and comfortable community in which to reside. And whereas the support of informed citizens is vital to the efficient maintenance and operation of the city's infrastructure, including operations such as maintenance services, fleet management, engineering, facilities management, traffic and transportation, and integrated waste management, and whereas the employees of the Public Works Department are committed to providing daily infrastructure services in a quality manner, and whereas the well-planned, designed, and maintained municipal infrastructure is vitally dependent upon a team of people dedicated to professional excellence, customer satisfaction, and who strive to accomplish their everyday tasks efficiently, effectively, and with accountability to the community they serve. Now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through the 25, 2013, as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations in the city of Glendale to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing for our local infrastructure, and to recognize the contributions which Public Works officials make every day to the betterment of our residents' health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers, city staff. My name is Sarkos Ganesan, and I'm here representing the Engineering Division. Alongside with me is Ms. Doris Alvarado, representing Facilities Management, and Myrna Martinez, representing Administration. Doris and I were honored to be the Employees of the Year last year for our respective divisions, and we're honored to come here and accept this proclamation on behalf of the Department of Public Works, Director of Public Works, Mr. Steve Zern, the Deputy Directors of Public Works, and the respective divisions that we're a part of. We have a pancake breakfast coming up next week on Thursday. It's open to city staff, and we also have an open house that's open up to the public, and we'd like to welcome all of you.
Thank you, as engineer, I have a greater touch for Public Works, and I will see you at 6:30 Pancake Day, as usual, from 6:30 to 9:00. Thank you very much, and have a good evening. Next, please.
At 3:00 D is Presentation from Relay for Life, Foothills and the American Cancer Society, to the Glendale Managers Association for the dedication to the annual Relay for Life event.
Hello, Mayor, Council, and the staff. I am here, my name is Lori Kiriko, and I am the Chair for this year's Foothills Relay for Life, which is this weekend, the Saturday and Sunday, and you guys are all welcome to come out if you have any spare time. We, I am here with my American Cancer Society staff partner, Kathy Gonzalez, and my Survivor Chair, Paula Warner. We're here to present the Glendale Management Association with an award for your continuous service in the fight against cancer. And we're here again to welcome you to our relay this weekend, and we appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Speech, speech.
Yes, Mayor Weaver, members of council, if you would allow me, my name is Coco Panocian. I'm representing the Glendale Management Association as their president. I have with me our Vice President, Sona Muradian, board members Laura Stotler and Rubi Golanyan. Foothill Relay for Life is a very valuable event, and Glendale Management Association has supported in the past three to four years, I believe. We have adopted, as part of our mission, Glendale managers have adopted promotion of community events to help promote any event community organizations put together. Glendale Foothill Relay is but one of a couple of dozen organizations that we sponsor and support. There's a list of them, but I'll just name a few. We also sponsor events put together by the Commission of the Status Women, Filipino Children's Foundation, we sponsor the Downtown Dash, the Glendale Foundation of the Retarded, Glendale Healthy Kids, Glendale Youth Alliance, Raptomus International, and the list goes on. On behalf of the Glendale managers, we would like to express our appreciation for council for having to make some tough decisions the past few years. You set the vision and the goal, and with the leadership of our executive directors and the executives of the city, your managers are ready to proudly serve the city of Glendale and its residents. Together, I think we have made some progress over the past few years, and we are ready to support the decisions and the agendas you set forth. We're here to serve the community, and we do it proudly, and we thank you for this opportunity to express our feelings. Thank you again.
And we have one add, Mr. Kasakian?
Yes, at 3:00 E, as will be listed, we have a proclamation designating May 11, 2013, as Fire Service Day.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation. Chief's going to accept. Whereas the International Association of Fire Chiefs has designated the second Saturday in May as Fire Service Day, a day to focus attention on the varied and technical services being offered by the fire departments of the United States and Canada, and whereas today's firefighters are technically trained and highly skilled professional public servants who perform many public services in addition to the suppression of fire, such as emergency medical responses, building inspection, and public fire safety education, and whereas the public can gain valuable lifesaving knowledge by seeking out and participating in fire education activities provided annually by the fire department. Now therefore, I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim May 11, 2013, as Fire Service Day, and call upon the people of Glendale to participate in the open house and activities offered at Glendale fire stations, and to take full advantage of the information provided by the fire department personnel to answer safety and the safety of their families in the event of a fire or other emergency. Mr. Friedman, would you do the honors? This is very timely, considering what this city and Ventura County have been through the past couple of weeks.
You and your department did an incredible job last week, and I know that you have the gratitude of the whole city of Glendale, so this is really very timely, as the mayor said. Congratulations to you, and all of your people.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and city staff. Fire Service Day is a great day for the fire department, not just the Glendale Fire Department, but fire departments all across the nation. You know, we invite the community in to celebrate, you know, what we do and our firefighters, so they can just get a small picture of what we do throughout the course of a day as a firefighter. But we're also going to be cooking breakfast. So the pancake breakfast starts at 10 o'clock, and we like to start the day off right, so we'd like to invite you over. We're going to have a bunch of things for all the kids to do. We're going to have the Disney characters there. We're going to be doing tours of the fire station. We're going to have face painting. We're going to have live demonstrations. And this year, something special is going to happen between 11 and 12. We actually have a monument that was presented to firefighter Bill Jensen by an artist, Michael Kalish, that we will be unveiling in front of Fire Station 21 between 11 and 12 o'clock. Now, he made this monument to dedicate to Bill Jensen because of the burns that he had in 1996, firestorms. And this was dedicated to all the firefighters who battled those wildfires as we do each and every year. So we would like to really invite the community to come on out, spend the day with us. It's going to just be a good time on Saturday morning into the afternoon. Thank you.
Chief, I'm sorry that I won't be there. It's my family's anniversary picture that we had to postpone because of the birth of my new granddaughter, so I get that I won't be there. Would you please tell Bill that I said hello? I'll miss being there. And for everybody to know, next week, the fire chief and police chief will be here to give a little report on the fire up in Chevy Chase, Glendales Canyons. Thank goodness my house wasn't in danger, but I was out there. Your guys did a great job. So we'll wait for your report next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now what is next?
Next item, the City Council and Staff comments.
Ms. Friedman.
Sure, I wanted to mention some of the events I went to this weekend, and to acknowledge the groups and volunteers that put these together. First, I was a co-chair, along with Mr. Sinanian and Mr. Najarian, of the Armenian Bone Marrow Registry Walk of Life, which took place, I believe, on Saturday. It was such a long weekend, it's hard to keep the days straight. But I think that they had their biggest turnout that I've ever seen. They had a lot of people, a lot of very enthusiastic people, which is great to see. It's a very important cause. It's one of the few times, by donating bone marrow and raising money for bone marrow transplants and research, it's one of the few times that us as individuals can literally save lives. And each and every person who participated last Saturday did their part in saving lives. So I want to thank them for their turnout, for the money that they raised, for everything that they did, and especially to Dr. Frida Jordan, who's the Executive Director of the Armenian Bone Marrow Registry. She does an incredible job. I attended the Chevy Chase Library's Cookbook Sale, which was a fundraiser for the library. My husband wasn't sure he wanted to go, he wanted to stay home, but I have to say, he went there and I had to drag him out, and he bought eight cookbooks. So we did our part to raise money for the library, and I want to congratulate Sheila Murray and the other volunteers who donated their books and manned the sale, and even baked goods to give to the people who were shopping. It was really nice. On Sunday, I had the honor of beginning the race, the Glendale Park and Open Space Foundation's Third Annual 10K Walk Run. This is a wonderful event that raises money for our parks and our open space through the foundation, which of course is a nonprofit that's all volunteer run. It's a 6.2-mile walk run, but the elevation is 1,735 feet up. You don't come back down, it's all up. So for those of you who think that you're healthy, who think that you're tough, start working out now for it for next year. They had 653 participants, making this the largest single-event trail run in Southern California, which is incredible, given that it's only the third year that we have done this. The top male finisher was Kwan Kuter of Eagle Rock, who finished in 40 minutes and 51 seconds, which was a new course record, which is pretty incredible if you know the terrain. It's very steep. The top female, for the third year in a row, Hoover High graduate, Leana Hernandez, who finished in 50 minutes, 26 seconds. Really incredible. The oldest finisher, listen up, Mr. Weaver, was John Peridouin, age 84, with a time of 1 hour, 55 minutes, and 12 seconds. I don't think I could do that time, and I'm a lot younger than John is. The youngest finisher was Nathaniel Marco, who's age 8, who had a time of 1 hour, 40 minutes, and 17 seconds. We had several City of Glendale employees in the event, including six from the Glendale Police Department. Seventy-three runners listed Glendale as their hometown, 46 came from Burbank, and 130 from Los Angeles. We had one runner from Arizona, two from Nevada, one from Missouri, and, listen to this, two came from Sweden to participate in this event. We had more than 75 volunteers from the local key clubs and scout groups, as well as 11 police officer explorers, sorry, police explorers assisting with the event. The Verdugo Mountains 10K was presented by Glendale Memorial Hospital and Health Center to benefit the work of Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, and a special thanks goes out to Massage Envy of Glendale on Bram Boulevard, who provided an amazing free pancake breakfast to every runner, sponsor, and volunteer. It was a really, really fantastic event, and I want to congratulate everybody. Lastly, I attended on Sunday night the Glendale Adventist Medical Center's Dr. Norik Bagdassarian Cancer Center's Laugh for a Cause, which was a fundraiser, of course, for the cancer center at Glendale Adventist. They sold out the Alex Theater, which is not easy to do. And I'll tell you something, I was planning on leaving a little early, because it was a Sunday night and I had a lot to do. It was so funny, the comedians were so amazing, that I stayed through the entire event and couldn't stop laughing. I had tears running down my face. It was a really great event, and they're going to be doing this every year, so keep it in mind for next year. It's a great night of entertainment for a really good cause. A special congratulations to Amela Markarian, our own Commissioner on CDBG, who was one of the organizers. It was really, really a wonderfully run event, very inspirational to the survivors that were there and the cancer patients that were there, and I'm sure very successful in terms of the fundraising for the center. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Sinanian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, last week, we had the unfortunate death of a young Glendale student, a 13-year-old, and there's nothing to suggest that the bus driver or anyone involved in that accident was at fault. And to make things worse, just yesterday, there were a mother and child pedestrians hit by traffic, again. And again, it's unclear from the report whether anyone was at fault, and that's not really an issue. There's apparently an ongoing problem with pedestrian traffic, with cyclist safety in the city of Glendale and beyond. And the most, you know, the worst example of that was what happened in February just across the borderline from Glendale with Damian Kevitt, who was hit by, right now, an unidentified driver, and was, as a result, sustained serious injuries. He had his right leg had to be amputated, his foot is damaged, so horrible things happen. And I feel like, no matter how much we do, even in the city of Glendale, because we've had students hit and die in the past, we've had cyclists hit in the past, no matter what we do, this problem keeps, you know, persisting. And as a sign of our own commitment to the safety of our pedestrians, of our cyclists, I wanted to propose that we, as a symbolic gesture, if nothing else, add a $5,000 commitment to the $25,000 reward that's been offered by the city of Glendale to anyone that'll identify the individual that hit Mr. Kevitt. And I know I need a second, you know, for that to happen.
Any problem, Mr. Choe, if we say to do that?
I'd have to refer to the city attorney about the use of public funds, I don't know.
That's something that would be permissible, but again, you need to agendize it.
Okay. Do I need a second to agendize this?
Put it out.
Thank you, Mr. Montero.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. I do think that was a very tragic incident. I think we should adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Jonathan Hernandez, who was a 13-year-old boy who had that tragic accident. I did attend the Armenian Bone Marrow Donor Registry Event. As Councilmember Friedman said, it was a very well-attended event. I also had the opportunity to attend the Armenian Relief Society Armenian Festival. If you were wondering what was going on at the Civic Auditorium, Saturday and Sunday, that was the Armenian Festival, and if you wandered inside, you would have been treated to Armenian dance, and music, and great food, and great vendors selling all sorts of artwork. It was a very great event, and congratulations to Lina Bozoyan and her entire Board of Directors that put it on. I would like to ask, I guess, the city attorney or the city manager, when is the appropriate time to start filling commission positions? We newly elected or re-elected council members have to fill some positions, and if you could give us some news on that, we can let the word out. I'm getting a lot of inquiries, and I'm not sure if there's an official process that we need to go through.
Unfortunately, there really has not been, and we're trying to add that, to infuse a more concrete process for the selection of commissioners. This item will be back in front of you in early June. It had been traditionally in May after the election, but as we're trying to either develop a process for the council to consider, or at least tighten up some of the guidelines for some of the commissions, that would come to pass in the month of May, and then you would do the commission appointments in early June.
Okay, very good. My last item, I didn't want to bring this up in public, let me pass that to you, but it involves a municipal code. Section 3.04.050 deals with outside employment of officers of the city, and it's very simple. It says, "No full-time officer or employee of the city shall follow any other calling or occupation, or engage in any business unless the city manager finds that such outside employment or business will not tend to impair the efficiency of such officer or employee and will not be incompatible with his or her position in the city." Now, I understand that one of our elected officials, our treasurer, boasts on his city website that he is the chief financial officer of an Armenian TV station, and also acting as the chief operations officer of an investment group in the city of Glendale. And I understand that the city attorney brought that to his attention, and it was not his inclination to remove himself from those positions. So my question to the city attorney is, is there any reason that you are not enforcing the municipal code in this matter?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd be happy to discuss this with you, Mr. Najarian, offline, but we have discussed the matter with him, and we haven't had a follow-up conversation with him regarding this particular issue as of yet. We will, I'll follow up immediately, and I can report back to council via written memo if there's no further movement on the issue.
Okay, I look forward to that.
Okay, is that it? And Mr. Kasakian, next.
Next is Consent Items, including Minutes. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I have no cards.
Move the Consent Calendar.
Second.
You're welcome.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Next is Oral Communication. However, this will be the three-minute portion reserved for community event announcements.
Thank you.
We'll have the full five-minute portion at the end of the all-city business.
Leon, Mayor. Three minutes, Mr. Mayor. Three minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the library and the Friends at the Library, and I'm pleased to announce to you that the Friends are having their annual meeting a week from tomorrow, May 15th, 6 o'clock at the library. We welcome everybody to come to the library to support the Friends. It costs $10, $20, $40, depending on your age and position, and we, the Friends have the book nook at the library, we have the children's book, and of course, we have the program that I've shared for the last 13 years. I'd like to talk about the next program that we're having at the library, May 15th, the same evening of our annual meeting, same time as our annual meeting. And we're really proud and happy that we're going to be able to bring Mark Ergas and Pat Harris to the library to talk about their book, Mistrial, An Inside Look at How the Criminal Justice System Works and Sometimes Doesn't. Now, Mark Ergas and Pat Harris are two of America's leading criminal defense attorneys, and they'll take readers inside some of the most compelling and sensational trials of the past 20 years in this country, in the United States. They've worked on cases that involve celebrities Michael Jackson, Chris Brown, Winona Ryder, Mike Tyson, and even Susan McDougal, Scott Peterson, and Gary Conduit. You remember Gary was a congressman whose girlfriend disappeared, and they finally, I think, solved that crime, but it wasn't Gary Conduit. Anyway, Mark Ergas is one of the most recognized criminal defense attorneys, and his list of high-profile clients include Michael Jackson, Susan McDougal, Scott Peterson, Chris Brown, Winona Ryder, Mike Tyson. And he and Pat, Pat Harris, have both appeared on CNN, Fox, and ABC shows, and just this last week, I saw Mark Ergas four times being interviewed by various people on Fox News, CNN, and Channel 49. Greta Van Susteren, somebody interviewed him on the Jody Harris case, and also Huckabee interviewed him. These are phenomenal lawyers, and their book's a phenomenal book, and this lecture they're going to have, which I will moderate, will be a phenomenal program for everybody who has any interest in law and order and what happens in our court system to come. So, thank you very much for considering coming. Parking is free.
Thank you.
Commission is free.
Thank you.
And I have flyers to pass out.
When you saw Ergas four times, I thought maybe you have a legal problem. But I wasn't, okay? Very good. Next speaker is Alec Bartrosov, followed by Shant Sahakian.
Hello, my name is Alec Bartrosov. Just wanted to let you guys know quickly about two upcoming events that Walk Bike Glendale is doing. Can we get it on the screen? So, the first one is May 16th, it's a Thursday, it's Metro's Bike to Work Day. We encourage everybody to consider riding their bike to work that day. We're going to have three pit stops that morning with partnership with the City of Glendale. One will be at Sonora and Flower, the second one here at City Hall, and the third at Glendale Community College. We're going to be giving away refreshments, snacks, patch kits, and other cool things. Our next event is our first annual Jewel City Fun and Fitness Ride. If you think the Verdugo one run was a challenge, we have one for the extreme folks out there. The Gear Grinder is 33 miles and 2,600 feet of elevation. We also have a ride for everybody, it's a seven-mile ride, starting at 9:00 AM, and then we also have a bicycle skills and safety course that morning as well. And it's in partnership with the Rotary Club and Glendale Adventist Medical Center. It is a fundraiser, it'll benefit low-income and homeless in the City of Glendale. And that's it, I have copies for everybody. If anybody in the audience wants a flyer, please raise your hand, and I'll get one too.
Thank you. Next speaker is Shant Sahakian.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, my name is Shant Sahakian, I'm here with the Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation. And first, I want to thank you all for your support of the Verdugo Mountains 10K. It was a phenomenal event, and thank you, Councilmember Friedman, for being there at the starting line with us. We're already on to our next event, Glendale Dodger Night is this Friday at Dodger Stadium, second annual event. We had a great turnout last year, and really looking forward to a great program this year. We're having a special pre-reception before the game at Dodger Stadium, and then, of course, the game will take place, and the game is also followed by Friday night fireworks, so you'll be able to go onto the stadium field and enjoy fireworks with friends, family, and neighbors. You can go on glendale dodger night dot com to order your tickets, and you have two days left, and again, the game is Friday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one of my own. Verdugo Woodlands Elementary School will be putting on an annual event, it's called Fathers' Follies, where all the fathers dress up as women. And it's, in terms of the public school system in the United States, this is the oldest fundraising of a public school event in the United States of America, and it's here in Glendale. It'll be $10 at the door at Glendale High School, and yours truly, and Art Moore, who is 100 years old, the two of us will be, have a cameo role in the event. We're going to be fairies in the Pixie Hollow scene. I don't know what that means, but it's about the sixth, seventh year I've done it. Two shows, one is Friday, starting at 6:00, and the other one is Saturday, starting at 3:30. So it's for good cause, the oldest one in the United States. If you want to see what your mayor looks like making a fool out of himself, drop in. Okay.
You're leaving yourself open.
I know, I left myself wide open. So, okay, I'm used to that. Okay, that completes that. What is next, please?
Next item is 8A, Director of Human Resources Regarding Action to Resolve an Impasse and Negotiations Between City of Glendale and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, IBW Local 18 Unit 40. 8A1 is a resolution resolving fiscal years 2011, 2012, and 2012, 2013 meet and confer impasse between the city and IBW. 8A2 is a resolution amending the classification and compensation resolution for employees represented by IBW.
Thank you, and Mr. Ochoa, I'll go to you.
Yes, sir. And actually, before we enter into that bit of business, maybe just for clarification's sake, if there's anyone in the audience who's here for item 9A1, as you see on the agenda and as was referenced by Ms. Beers, that item, that hearing appeal for design review will be continued until next week, so if you have any cards there, just so everyone's aware of that. Now, turning to the item at hand under 8A, in the wake of the Great Recession, Glendale has led the way on pension reform and compensation reform. And considering that the significant bulk of our operational costs as a service business are R&amp;D personnel-driven, we must pay very close attention to what our cost of doing business as it relates to our people actually is. As I say, we have led that way on pension reform, and we have demonstrated as such with collaborative relationships with all of our bargaining units, save one. After nearly two years of meeting and conferring in good faith, we find ourselves at a crossroads with that last bargaining group, and that is the subject of tonight's proposed action. With that, Mr. Doyle, our HR director, will walk you through the presentation as we ask the council's support of a resolution of impasse and the, resolving that impasse and moving forward with the unilateral implementation on IBW. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item before you is a resolution resolving the current impasse in labor negotiations between the city and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 18. This resolution will impose the city's last best and final offer of March 29th, 2012. This, after a prolonged series of negotiations that we believe needs to be resolved now in order to achieve the necessary savings to bolster the economic standing of the utility and bring IBW Local 18 into alignment with the other employee bargaining groups within the City of Glendale. Before we get into this presentation, I do want to say that tonight's action, which to my knowledge has only been done once before at the City of Glendale, is being undertaken with great reluctance. The process of impasse, and more importantly, the imposition of a proposal involving reductions, is indeed controversial, and something that many of our outstanding city employees represented by IBW will find upsetting, both emotionally and financially. But we are unfortunately at a crossroads, as Mr. Ochoa stated. Whatever's said tonight, and however you vote on this resolution, let it be said that I and the other members of the city's negotiating team have nothing but the utmost respect for our city employees working for Glendale Water and Power. Once we get through this matter, I hope we can continue to work well together, along with our GWP employees and Local 18, to continue to do good things for this organization and the community at large. As we begin the PowerPoint presentation, it's important to point out how we arrived here, and much of it comes down to the budgetary challenges that this city and its utility has faced over the past five years. Cannot be overstated that the problems of relatively flat revenues compared against ongoing rising employment costs present a dilemma for any responsible organization seeking to balance its books, which brings us to tonight's action. As you know, since 2008, this organization, like most, has suffered from a combination of the weak economy, declining in flat revenues, and just in general, the increased cost of doing business. We have seen deficits in both our general fund and our utility. The general fund, we've seen a deficit of 15.4 million in fiscal year 2012, 18 million in 2011, and 10 million in 2010. The utility, as well, has not been immune to these problems, as we saw a deficit last year of 10.8 million and a loss of approximately $16 million in the 2011-2012 fiscal year. Recognition of the fact that three-quarters of our expenditures are generally personnel-related, that would include salaries, pension obligations, healthcare costs, and other benefits, the latter, too, are rising and have always risen well beyond the rate of inflation. The recent action by CalPERS and the change in amortization of, the amortization period from 15 years to five will severely underscore this problem. Additionally, with regard to healthcare costs, the Affordable Care Act, every responsible actuarial is projecting double-digit increases in medical costs over the next five to six years. In this economic climate, some of the overarching objectives we have pursued as we've gone into our labor negotiations with our employee groups, and this goes back to the previous city manager as well, is the following bullets. First of all, examination of total compensation costs. That means looking not just at salaries, but the associated benefits and pension costs that go along with that. Looking at reducing the costs of services, avoiding reducing service levels, but looking at the costs that go along with that. We've addressed eliminating as many budgeted positions as we can in order to balance our budgets. We've eliminated vacant positions, we've done layoffs, we've offered retirement incentives, and the council is well-aware of the great reduction in the number of salaried budgeted positions over the past two to three years. In light of all this, we have sought greater cost sharing by our employees. In our PERS pension costs, we've implemented second tiers for new hires, and we've had health benefit insurance cost sharing, having the employees pick up more of that expense as well. In these difficult times, we have worked very effectively with our other bargaining groups. This slide provides a brief example of some of the concessions offered over the past few years. For example, our GMA group, since 2010-2011 fiscal year, they've increased their PERS cost sharing by a total of 2.5%, and in the 2011-2012 year, they paid 100% of the medical Our GCA group, after imposition in 2010-2011, agreed to pay an additional 1% for PERS cost sharing in 2011-2012. Our GPOA group, our police officers, in 2011-2012, they agreed to a 2% pay reduction, they also agreed to pay an additional 2% for PERS cost sharing, as well as a significant reduction in their court-related overtime. On top of that, there was a, in that particular year, they picked up 100% of the medical costs. The GFBA, Glendale Firefighters Association, they amended their MOU four times, deferring a scheduled cost of living increase, a total of four years, from 2009 to 2013, and along the way, agreed to increase their PERS cost sharing by 2%. This slide represents a summary of the city employee cost sharing of the employer's share of the, by the various employee bargaining groups. In it, you see, the GMA now pays 3%, GCA members pay 1.5%, GPOA pays 3.5%, the Firefighters Association, currently 2.25%, and that will rise to 3.5% effective January 1st, 2015. The IBW pays 0.5%. As we approach negotiation with the IBW, the city had several overarching objectives. Number one, come to agreement and establish an initial MOU. We truly hope to have an MOU in place as a result of these talks. Number two, address the economic challenges facing the city and its utility. And number three, bring the IBW in alignment with the other employee bargaining groups, recognizing the sacrifices made by the other groups relative to compensation, cost sharing for retirement, and benefits. With regard to the IBW's overarching objectives, we can let them speak for themselves, but it appeared to be as follows: to raise members' salaries to a level of the surrounding agencies, and that would include the agencies that Local 18 currently represents, including LADWP, Burbank Water and Power, Pasadena Water and Power, and Southern California Edison, which is a private utility. Additionally, to avoid further cost sharing on the pension program. We continually heard the statement, "We don't go backwards" on this particular subject. On top of that, there appeared to be a means to fashion labor management relationship akin to LADWP and Burbank Water and Power, where in essence, the utility is viewed almost as an independent entity, separate, not associated with the greater organization as a whole. Negotiations with IBW began in June of 2011, and I would say with great optimism. In fact, there were employees involved, as shop stewards, who up until this point were not involved with labor negotiations previously. There's a lot of optimism, a lot of good feelings. The initial sessions did prove to be somewhat productive, and I think the first few months, there was a real focus on MOU language and the process of constructing our initial MOU from scratch. The city did present its first economic proposal on July 20th, 2011. The IBW's first economic proposal was presented in October 6th of 2011, which is four months after we started the negotiations. In that proposal, the IBW representatives sought a 4% pay increase retroactive to July 1st of 2011, and additional increases in a multi-year MOU. It was a little surprising at this point to see this, because this was right about the time that we were learning some very dire economic circumstances affecting the utility in particular. At this time, pay raises did not seem appropriate. Negotiations continued through March of 2012, and at this point, there was really minimal progress on economic matters, and as I said earlier, we had decent progress on language and the construction of the MOU. City's position, consistent with our other bargaining groups, was that there'd be no COLAs and additional cost sharing. The IBW sought, again, retroactive COLA and enhancement in the special pays. The subsequent proposals put forth by IBW began to show minimal progression from one proposal to the next. In fact, the staff report notes that Local 18's proposal of February 14th, 2012, was almost identical to the one that they had submitted on December 21st, 2011. When this was pointed out to the representatives at the table, they said that they would look at this again and come back with a modified proposal, which they did on March 13th of 2012. That proposal, again, was minimally changed from the one- That proposal, again, was minimally changed from the one prior to that, or actually, the two prior to that. The only change in the whole series of proposals was a modification in the medical insurance share from 70 percent to 65 percent. At this point, we had significant concerns. This caused us to pause and examine where we were at, and I think at this point, it's appropriate to look at salaries of our IBW representative employees. As the PowerPoint says, though not where they want to be, IBW members are well compensated. The pie chart shows the distribution of employee salaries, and these are for salaries for calendar year 2012. It shows 61 employees who earned between $100,000 and $177,000; 56 employees who earned $70,000 to $100,000; and 53 employees that made less than $69,000. The average-based salary for IBW employees, and this is without overtime and extra pays, is $78,000. And again, this compares with approximately $58,000 for our GCA employees. The average mean gross salary, $93,045. The average median gross salary, $92,000. As pointed out previously, in both 2011 and 2012, over a third of the membership grossed over $100,000 in salary. On March 29th, 2012, the city issued its last best and final offer, and this was after 18 negotiations sessions and nine months of negotiations. The key provisions in the city's last best and final offer included an increase in employee cost sharing by 1.75 percent, or in the alternative, a 1.75 percent pay reduction, employee cost sharing of 75 percent in medical insurance increases, with some extra pay enhancements. This last best and final offer had the provision that if this offer did not result in a ratified agreement, the parties would therefore be at impasse. And this was put in writing and very specific to the representatives of the IBW. IBW was given until April 10th, 2012, as a deadline to respond to the city. On April 10th, 2012, the IBW did reject the city's last best and final offer. In fact, we were told in writing that the membership unanimously rejected the city's last best and final offer, this proposal. So with that rejection by IBW, the parties were, in fact, at impasse. Once the impasse was declared, and in the months that followed, the city and IBW made several attempts to resolve the impasse. In fact, three additional meetings were scheduled: May 9th, 2012, June 20th, 2012, and July 11th, 2012. And there were post-impasse settlement proposals exchanged by the two groups. The city put forth a proposal ultimately, and this was presented on June 20th, 2012, as an impasse resolution proposal, one that would reduce the cost-sharing demand from 1.75 percent down to 1 percent. It also proposed a 50-50 split in medical insurance increases. It dropped this proposal relative to the 35 percent standby pay. It increased compensation for the station maintenance and repair group to be within 5 percent of the electrical line mechanic series, and it kept very favorable extra pay proposals that had been part of previous proposals with the city. With this impasse settlement proposals, we looked at individual employee salaries, and we found that many employees in the bargaining group would either break even or even come out ahead with this particular proposal. This, again, was rejected by IBW. In these discussions, IBW also presented some proposals. Their proposal did drop the 4 percent COLA demand, but it still sought retroactive salary increases based on a survey and no additional cost sharing. And the salary survey would be based on four agencies selected by IBW, including LADWP, Southern California Edison. And again, these are two agencies that we really have very little in common, particularly Edison, which is a private entity, and Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, which is significantly larger than the City of Glendale. For the next three slides, we wanted to do a side-by-side comparison of the city's March 29th, 2012, last best final offer, and the June 20th settlement proposal, impasse settlement proposal by the city. Again, these are both city proposals, and you'll see in each of these proposals, somewhat modified movement on the city's direction. With regard to the salary reduction or the increased cost sharing for PERS, the city reduced it to 1 percent. The medical insurance, city was no longer seeking 75 percent pickup by the employees, down to 50 percent. The merit step elimination remained the same. The proposal to increase 12-kV rubber glove pay remained the same. The standby assignment, that had been part of the last best and final offer, was actually dropped, that we wanted to change that to a flat pay rather than 35 percent. The station maintenance, bringing them more in alignment with the electrical line mechanics, 6 percent, or, I'm sorry, 5 percent rather than 6 percent. And a couple of these other items remained within the proposal. The asbestos assignment pay, the water license incentive pays of increases, all remain the same. Holiday and loop pay, that was going to be, that was part of the last best and final offer, but this item was to increase that, was dropped by the IBW. And again, the last item was the union release time that was increased from 50 to 75 hours annual, and that was the collective contribution.
Did you miss a slide? Did you miss a slide? I think you...
That's the first.
No, there were just two slides on that.
Okay, there were. I was behind on one, I think. Again, this impasse-related settlement offer by the city, which was offered on June 20th, we felt very favorable, and we were hoping that the IBW representatives would accept At the conclusion of the summer, the city chose to discontinue the post-impasse settlement discussions. As the summer, fall, and winter of 2012 ended up being very busy, there were other priorities, primarily relating to economic issues affecting the City of Glendale. And again, this was the year that we lost our redevelopment funding, we had other significant structural, financial issues facing the city, probably the largest in the city's history. We were also facing layoffs, layoffs amongst general fund positions and positions in the utility, and all of the associated work and bumping and misery that that process causes. We did offer a retirement incentive program as a means to reduce our staff and to mitigate the effects of layoffs. And that retirement incentive program ended up being quite popular and accepted by up to 150 employees in the organization. City also put forth a reorganization reclassification plan during this time period, which was very, very time-intensive. Additionally, the city had, following the layoffs involving IBW employees, IBW demanded to meet and confer over the impacts of those layoffs, and we participated in a series of five exhaustive sessions with the IBW over the months of October and November of 2012. At this point, as we entered the 2013 year, we came to the realization that the negotiations impasse needed to be resolved. We tried impasse resolution. We even had intervention by PERB, where representatives of the city and IBW met with PERB in January of 2013. We know IBW members reached out to individual members of council and addressed their concerns as well. We have come to a point where it really does not appear that an agreed-upon resolution can be reached with the IBW. Therefore, the city is seeking to resolve this negotiations impasse with the imposition of the city's last best and final offer of March 29th, 2012. And some of the key points of this proposal include the following: a base salary reduction of 1.75 percent, and that's in lieu of an increase in PERS cost sharing. Under the law, an employer cannot impose PERS cost sharing, so the alternative has to be a pay reduction. Second bullet addresses the IBW employees picking up 75 percent of the increase in medical insurance premiums that took effect June 1st, 2012, and set to take effect June 1st of 2013. Additionally, it would modify the existing 35 percent standby assignment pay to a flat rate as follows: weekday, three hours per day at straight time, weekends, four hours per day, and holidays, five hours per day. Additionally, in this imposition, there are enhancements, including the elimination of the merit step and the replacement with a step nine. The increase in the 12-kV rubber glove pay, increasing that from 3 percent to 4.25 percent. This affects primarily our electrical line mechanic employees. An increase in compensation for the station maintenance and repair group to be within 6 percent of the corresponding classifications within the electrical line mechanic series. Again, a significant raise for these employees. Assignment pay of 1.75 percent for employees train in fiber optic cable splicing. A 5 percent assignment play for power plant employees when operating the plant's bridge train, 5 percent assignment pay for power plant employees when assigned to work with asbestos. An increase in water division licensing incentive pay by 1.5 percent. An increase in the holiday and loop pay for employees on a 42-hour work shift from 12 to 13 percent. And then that the city would provide an aggregate total of 50 hours of release time for the IBW chairman and stewards for meetings, seminars, and classes. This implementation also includes comprehensive terms and conditions of employment document in lieu of an MOU. So if council takes this action tonight, we will not have an agreed-upon MOU, but rather a terms and conditions document, which will resemble an MOU, but it won't be a bilateral agreement. This imposition, if approved, will take effect May 16th, 2013, which is the start of the next pay period. In conclusion, we want to address just some key issues and concepts relative to this discussion. The first being, the city must live within its means. A sustainable compensation model in the wake of the Great Recession is essential. There's a new normal, and that new normal should include cost sharing by employees. The second item, GWP is a department, not unlike all the city's other operations. While we respect and value the work of GWP employees, as we do of other department employees, their compensation needs cannot be viewed differently than the other employees throughout this organization, which leads to the next topic. Parity among bargaining units is desirable. It's already been stated, there must be appropriate alignment amongst our employee groups and paid benefit items. Understanding the real market costs of a municipal utility is essential. Simply because IBW Local 18 represents all of the surrounding utilities does not mean that all of the surrounding utilities are the same. We need to factor that when looking at issues of pay, benefit, and market forces. The second of the last bullet says, even if raises and benefit increases were reasonably available, the city needs to reflect the values and conditions of the community. The economy is still very fragile. Our customers know that, we all know that. Wage and benefit increases at this time would send the wrong message to our residents. And the last item, good faith efforts define compromise. The city and IBW have met over 20 times, with little progress seen on the part of IBW, other than repeated declarations that we don't go backwards. Our other bargaining groups have recognized the implications of the recession, and we cannot lose sight of that fact. We therefore believe that this action tonight is both fair and appropriate. With that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from staff? My colleagues? Or do you want to go to the public? Okay, I have three cards. Is there one speaker that is speaking for IBW leadership? I have Len Mayer, is it? Gus Corona, and Mike Sagairhorn? Is there one of you that is the main...
Payphone.
Okay. Is there one of you that is the main speaker for the IBW or not? Are you speaking for the IBW? The main guy?
We have three speakers.
Oh, I know. Okay.
For myself.
Three. Let's start with three minutes and see where it goes, okay?
So may I begin? First of all, can I ask, we sent a proposal this morning to council, to staff. Was that accepted or rejected?
Mr...
At this point, sir, we probably should go through whatever public comment we have.
That's a good point.
We did receive the proposal and...
Yes, we all received it. Yeah, let's get through, and then we'll address your questions.
So Local 18 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers...
Excuse me, your name for the record.
My name is Martin Marufo. I'm an assistant business manager with IBW Local 18. Local 18 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers has only been representing GWP employees for a very short time. And in that time, we've recognized a host of issues that have gone, that should be of grave concern to the mayor and to the council and to the staff. GWP has an aging infrastructure, and it has no clear plan on how to replace it. GWP is barely beginning to understand and address the issues of meeting green power goals as mandated by the state of California. GWP is also beginning to hemorrhage staff that are primarily leaving for reasons of morale. GWP is absolutely atrocious on safety issues. There are real problems here, and we need to address them. In the water side of the house, a year ago, there was an OSHA investigation. Some of the workers working with hazardous chemicals inside a tank were assigned to agitate the water by walking in the water, while other employees on top of the tank were pouring chemicals into the tank. The PPE, the personal protective equipment that was given to them, was not adequate or appropriate. When we had the interviews, I can tell you that most of those employees didn't know what a material safety data sheet was, what the basics were for their protection in that They were wearing hip boots, full-face respirators, and rain jackets. The supervisor was instructing the employees to dump the chemicals while others were inside. And I thought, when I had these interviews, I thought, okay, maybe it's a one-off. That was expressed to me by management, it was expressed to me by some of the other folks from the City of Glendale. Water quality this month is having issues, the same issues. Respirators, they've never been fit-tested or trained or given a medical evaluation, which are required. Ammonia storage and chlorine storage in close proximity. The chlorine storage, to be clear, is liquid and powder in one containment. If it mixes together, there could be catastrophic issues. These have been reviewed by staff, and they've known about it for about a year. None of these things can be addressed and achieved without a trained, safety-equipped, professional workforce. And together, we need to accomplish these goals for reliability for the customers, safety for the workers, and the public, and compliance. You forgot a whole lot of facts. You forgot a whole lot of information in that. And I understand you have the floor, but there's a lot more to be said in more than three minutes.
Thank you. Who's speaking next? Three. Just your name for the record.
As of... Hi, how you doing?
Hello.
I was an employee here, journeyman lineman, as of September 2012. I left to go to Contractors Local 47, which were, they treat us like kings, where we should be treated, like linemen. You've lost three other journeymen, which is, out of pop, $500,000 of the city ratepayers' money that you've lost. That's $2 million in nine months. You guys are going to lose more. You have great people working for GWP that know their jobs, that love what they do, and yet you treat them like crap every day. It sucks. That's why I left. That's why I left. Mr. Zern, have you seen my? He doesn't even want to talk to me. No one, you never even seen my exit interview, did you? In fact, I bet you it's ripped up. I've been a thorn in your guys' side because I want what's right. And what's right is to treat your employees fairly, not fire, not PD. GWP makes the money. We're going to continue to make the money. I bet you guys couldn't even come out for a week and do our job. Not come out and watch us, come out and do our job, get your hands dirty. This isn't a trade where it's, it's, oh, we're going to walk across the street. This is life and death situations every day. We deal with it every day. Water lines, high-powered lines, everything. I don't think you guys understand at all. It's disgusting. Have a good night.
There's no clapping or booing or applauding in the council chambers of Glendale. One more.
Everybody else?
One.
Words?
Hey, hold it down. One more warning, and I'll empty the council chambers. Be respective. Go ahead, your name?
Gus Corona, Senior Assistant Business Manager for IBW Local 18. Talk about revisionist history here. I look at that PowerPoint, and, boy, Matt, you just left a lot of detail out. You know, it's, the more we've tried to negotiate with this city, the more we realize that it's not about the money. It isn't. It's philosophical. You know, it's more about trying to bust the union. That's what it's about. And the last six months has made us, made that very clear. But understand this, you know, we reached out to a couple of you guys. That was a mistake. The mistake we made was that we trusted you guys. And you know what? Never again. But understand this, you guys are going to do what you do tonight. You're going to implement a contract here. But you know what? We're not giving up. We will still continue to negotiate. We will still stand strong. You see what's happening here. This is not just Glendale Water and Power. You got the rest of IBW Local 18 standing here, not to intimidate, but to support our union brothers and sisters here at Glendale Water and Power. That's why they're here. No other reason, to support. And you know what? Each and every one of you, when you guys are long gone, faded out in history, guess what? We will still be here. We will continue to represent these employees, and we will continue to do our job. Understand that.
Thank you. Thank you. I have no more cards.
There was one more card actually from Mr.
Wait, 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 guys, there's another card apparently.
Leon Mayer. He had submitted one.
Okay. Sorry, Leon, somebody spoke and didn't put a card in then.
My name is Leon Mayer, and this is the first time in the last 13 years where I've been appearing here for 500 times plus, that I've put my card in to talk about a matter that did not involve the library, but it involved local politics. And the reason I'm here is because I read a article by Ron Kay in the Daily News, the news press rather, in which he was highly critical of the IBW Local 18, and by inclusion, Unit 40. He didn't mention Unit 40. Now, IBW Local 18, in an article by Steve Lopez of the Los Angeles Times, he said that the guy in charge, the union boss of the IBW Local 18, is a gentleman by the name of Darcy. And Darcy is feared, coveted, respected, and reviled, and talks about how the IBW plans to spend millions of dollars to get Wendy Gruehl, elected mayor, and put more compliant city council members into office. Darcy is the king of bullies, and IBW Local 18 is the club that uses, that he uses to force the, that's how leadership of LA to surrender to their outrageous demands. He froze on the bargaining table under threat of a strike intended to shut off water and power to 4 million people. Well, there's not 4 million people in Glendale, but I don't think we should be intimidated like LA Power was because LA, Los Angeles allowed the union to contribute millions of dollars to a mayoral campaign, and millions of dollars were also contributed when the retired mayor also gave them a sweetheart deal. So, I just felt I had to come here and make some remarks to let the people know here that there's not agreement between the city council and the union who's come before you. And the city council has represented, and have always tried to represent, the feelings of the people, and I think I know a little bit about the feelings of the people of Glendale. I was nominated by Mayor Quintero as the outstanding adult last year.
Thank you, Leon. Leon, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We got the message.
Thank you.
Do you have no more cards? Mr. Cho, do you want to? I know, just so the public at home knows, they all left. IBW members left, so they can't hear anything the council or staff says in response to their comments. But for the Glendale public listening at home, perhaps you'd like to answer one or two, it's up to you.
Surely. And it is fitting that you witnessed Mr. Corona leave the chambers with the assembled membership. And that in and of itself is a microcosm of what our negotiations have been going back for nearly two years. This is a group that has heard only that which it wants to hear, because they, if nothing else, have a stick-to-itiveness to two things, the two elements of their mantra. They don't negotiate for anybody else, and they don't go backwards. But what do you say to a group when the entire world has gone backwards? What do you tell the community when, in a full-service city environment, we are trying to make sure we provide the highest level of service to all of our residents in every one of our line departments, including, up to and including, IBW? Mr. Corona, he made the comment about something, weak insult towards the credibility of our HR director, Mr. Doyle, in terms of revisionist history. And maybe there's a grain of truth in that, because if there was any element of revisionism, it was that Mr. Doyle was generous in the way that he characterized what the last two years have been with respect to the meetings and the negotiations such as they were that have gone on. I can tell you, to Mr. Marufo's question, we did receive a proposal today, literally at the 11th hour, seeking to avoid this action, or maybe not seeking to avoid this action, because in consideration of the proposal, it is so insignificantly different from that which we've seen before, that it doesn't really merit any consideration by the city council, based on what you have outlined through your negotiators in good faith at the table with IBW. Our first proposal, going back to, or one of our initial proposals, going back to November of 11, sought savings through cost sharing of $373,000 from this bargaining group. The proposal that Mr. Doyle outlined for you as part of this imposition would result in a cost savings of about $250,000. Conversely, the first proposal, the original proposal by IBW from October of 11, was costed out at costing the city 1.58 million dollars, and the proposal that was delivered this morning would actually cost us about $2 million. Now, I don't know about you, but certainly as we try to reason and compromise and find ways to come together, what you have seen again and again and again from the negotiators from IBW has been inversely proportionate to that which we have tried to do to get them to the table, because to the extent that there's a philosophical difference, I think he put his finger on the issue there. There is a philosophical difference, but it's not that the city's trying to bust the union, if only in the sheer fact that we have agreements with all of our other association groups. All of our other association groups, who IBW admittedly does not bargain for, have sought to seek, have sought to make sure that the city remains a viable, ongoing concern for the community. That has been extraordinarily, extraordinarily difficult to stomach as you try over a long period of time to meet and confer in good faith, because, I think it was Mr. Sagehorn who said that they do an outstanding job. And I will tell you, as your city manager, the men and women of GWP, whether or not they belong to IBW, they first and foremost are employees of GWP, they do an outstanding job. But you know what? So do our integrated waste management workers, so do our engineers, so do our librarians, so do our managers, execs, recreation staff, planners, and everybody else that has saw fit to help the city get through this unprecedented economic condition. That is what has made Glendale this leader among municipalities, and the philosophy of I've Got Mine is that which seeks to destroy those cities that are otherwise the 88 municipal corporations of Los Angeles County. They don't negotiate for any other group, but this here is Glendale, and it's not some other city. We have to do what is right for us, and we hope that the council will agree that the proposal being presented to you is right for Glendale. Now, with respect to the safety issue, because we do take that very seriously, and it seems interesting that it would come up today in this particular context, but I'd have to defer, as a matter of operation, to Mr. Zern as to the veracity of the comments that were made.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you got a little taste of the diversionary tactics that I deal with regularly. My experience in the short time I've been here is that when there is an operational issue that the IBW does not favor, there tends to suddenly be a multitude of safety issues involved. I'll give you an example. I implemented a cross-training program as a way of making ourselves more efficient and be able to use the talents of our employees. This is with electricians in the SMR unit, electricians in the power plant, and to cross-train them. It was opposed from day one. And what I faced from that was, day after day, was safety-related issues, safety-related issues that had never come up before. Now, with that said, we take every single safety-related concern very seriously, and everyone is investigated. Mr. Marufo referred to an incident that occurred in a reservoir. Yes, there was an OSHA report on that. Yes, it was investigated thoroughly by the city, Mr. Doyle's office, Mr. Garcia's office, and my office. And there was action taken. And, you know, that is, that is a confidential issue, but action was taken, and we had some lessons learned. Certainly not as serious as was conveyed. But again, these are the kind of tactics that I have dealt with in the short time I've been here. I'm not used to that. Safety is a huge issue for us in public works. We take it very seriously, and we have really good safety programs. I have to tell you that the folks in GWP have outstanding safety programs. But just, just a final note on that, to show folks, and it was my concern too, to put safety in the utility ahead of everything. I created a position, Utility Safety Officer, a dedicated safety manager for the utility. This is consistent with industry standard. It's not something we've ever had in Glendale. Traditionally, supervisors in each operation have been responsible for pulling double duty, being the safety officer and doing safety training, but also doing their supervisory duties. This position will do nothing but safety. It will report to me, it will implement the programs from myself and the chief AGMs, and I think it's going to take safety to a whole new level. Mr. Marufo is aware of that. I've conveyed that to him several times. So, we do take it seriously, and we are ramping that effort up as we speak.
If I can then leave the council with this, and then certainly we'd answer any questions that you might have, because I don't want anyone to walk away from this particular hearing with the impression that we don't value our GWP employees, and I think Mr. Doyle made that abundantly clear, as did Mr. Zern, but I want to say it very clearly as well. I have a great deal of admiration and respect for the men and women of GWP. And so, when we examine how, we will come together, how we will work together in the coming years, I think it's important to have some measure of perspective, because whatever the council decides to do tonight, we still have a utility. That is the city's utility. Those employees are our employees. We believe there is tremendous value in having our own water and power utility, and because we will have our water and power utility, we have to find ways to come together. We have to find some level of common ground. Now, as you can see from tonight, that takes, you know, two people, two separate interests to come together and find that common interest. I think that we can do it. IBW is new to Glendale, and I guess for that matter, the way that we have historically done business is new to them. The good news in all of that is regardless of whatever the council does tonight, we need to begin negotiating next year's contract immediately after this contract is resolved, either by unilateral implementation or some other measure. And so, I think back to Lincoln's Second Inaugural, and that, you know, the notion, the comment, the ideal of, you know, with malice towards none, with charity for all, that is the idea, that is the level of respect we will bring to the table and continue to bring to the table. But we would hope, and we would, we would hope that the employees of GWP represented by IBW would respect and reflect that regardless of the council's decision tonight.
And Mr. Zern, how long you been doing double duty between public works and water and power?
It will be one year on June 1st.
So, you supposed to have fixed everything was wrong with water and power in a year, right?
No, I don't think so, Mr. Mayor.
That's an honest answer.
I needed a little time, but.
You need a little time.
But as I, as I said, we'll fix it, believe me.
As far as I know, you have the confidence of this council to do it. Okay, we did have one other card, Dean Crabbe, who put down oral communications by accident. So, you get your three minutes. Just your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Dean Crabbe, last name is C.R.A.B.B. I now work for Department of Water and Power. I worked here for the city of Glendale for five years. I went through my apprenticeship here, and I was a journeyman for a year. I'm actually glad you guys didn't call me at first. I was one of the people involved in bringing IBW here. And for that purpose, I got drug in, I got investigated, I got threatened to be fired, I got all kinds of good stuff. If you go back and look at the records, you'll find four or five people who were in fact fired for trying to bring IBW here. You guys bring up the whole safety, you know? That's one of the key reasons why we brought IBW here, was for our safety. We have nobody. You can bring a safety person in all you want to, for trash, for libraries, for whatever you want. You come tell us how to phase out 12,000 volts without killing ourselves or blowing up a vault, or killing 50 people out there on the road when it goes wrong. You guys don't have those answers. That's the problem. Okay, that's why we needed IBW here. The other problem that we had, whenever we went into a contract negotiation, okay? For instance, you guys are saying that they're trying to pit GWP against Burbank and Pasadena and LA DWP. Those are the same three people that were dealt with before IBW got here. And it was Glendale's decision to do those three people to balance what we get paid against, you know? It's funny how everything changes. Another one of the big reasons that we wanted IBW here is because when we went into a negotiation, if it didn't go the way that the city wanted, they came to council and just said, we've given them a fair offer, implement it. We thought that was wrong, we thought it was illegal. We went and sought IBW to come and help us with that situation. If you guys are the other side of the negotiation party, I don't think you guys have the right to implement a contract. I think you should have to go to an outside source and say, is your best and final offer fair? We're hearing your side of it, yet the IBW wants to go talk, and we're not getting to hear their full side, which is why you need an arbitrator in the middle during the negotiations. So, you hear both, full sides of both, okay? I can tell you right now, you guys say that you have a good city utility, and you do, and they're trained very well. I can assure you, if you guys do not address this, that's not going to keep happening, okay? I'm one of them that walked. I know a lot of the people that are here, and you guys will not have much of a utility left if you keep acting like this. I like Glendale. I like Glendale. I wouldn't have left if it would have been better. If you guys wouldn't have tried to kick me out for trying to help the other people who are here and make things safe, because I can assure you, your safety person does not know power. You cannot turn around and make another one of us in four years like you can a trash man or a librarian or anybody, almost anybody else. I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have no more cards than we've heard from staff, I think. Not to drag this out, to go ahead with the council comments. Any of my colleagues want to say anything?
I do. I just want to state to the public and to the members of the IBW that...
They're applauding him.
That the council did not come to this decision easily nor rashly. In fact, we've been in impasse for over a year. It was the sentiment of many on the council that we need to create a path forward, a long-term relationship with the IBW. Imposing doesn't give us a long-term solution. And that's why we worked so hard at trying to find some common ground. In fact, I was one of the members of the council called out by Mr. Marufo or Mr. Corona. Obviously, he's upset. I think he feels that there was a betrayal, but in no way was there a betrayal. I think that I and another colleague of mine went the extra mile to try and make sure that there was no filtering going on or shading between their discussions and staff and staffs conveying that information to council. So we did have discussions face-to-face on more than one occasion. And it's unfortunate that we were not able to come to an agreement. We have other bargaining groups that we deal with, that we have acted in good faith with them. It would be patently unfair to all of them should we treat any group differently than any other. I think that we had some room to move. I think that the settlement proposal, which came after a last and best referred to by Mr. Doyle, is something that would have been a good point, a good opportunity for the IBW and our workers to accept. It is a more generous offer than the one that's going to be imposed. We do have to continue working forward. We are ready to sit down and work with you. As the city manager said, we do highly respect your efforts, we appreciate your good work, and you've helped us in many opportunities when we've had windstorms and the rains and the flooding that we experienced in Southern California over the past, at least during my tenure on council. It's just unfortunate that the economic situation is the way it is, that we cannot afford to extend any more generous benefits, pay, salary, cost sharing than we already have. And it's been about a year that we've been trying to find a way out of this impasse. Unfortunately, we were not able to do it, and there comes a time when you have to sit down and say that you're going to do the imposition and act on it, but not and never close the door on future discussions and charity to all, malice towards none. Speaking for myself and perhaps others on the council, we definitely have no malice. We want you to stay with the organization and we will try and be as fair as we can today and moving forward in every step of the way with your organization.
Thank you. Mrs. Friedman.
Well, first of all, I completely agree with Ms. Najarian. I'm not going to repeat what he said, although I'd like to. He said it very well and definitely captures my sentiments. This is a difficult day, a difficult decision. We have spent the last year trying to come to terms with this group. I was hoping throughout that entire time that we would come to an agreement. That certainly would be better for the employees, better for the city, better for the people of Glendale. We do have great workers at GWP. I get compliments all the time from residents about what a good job they do. I don't disagree with them that it's a difficult job. I don't think they're badly paid. I think that they're fairly compensated, but I understand, of course, everybody wants to do better. However, this particular economic time is not a time where this city can afford to give raises to their employees. They just can't, you know, to an entire group of employees. At the same time, our retirement system is not sustainable without cost sharing with our employees. It may not be sustainable even with the cost sharing, but it's certainly not sustainable without that. And the other employees of the city have recognized that, and they have been our partners and they have instituted that cost sharing, and they are paying more out of their pockets. And we have to have parity with all of our groups. I don't believe that LADWP is a role model that we should be emulating. I don't even think that Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles residents believe that anybody should be emulating LADWP. It's been in the news constantly what a backlash there is against that utility. And that is unfortunately because of the benefits in the pay that they've been able to achieve over the years. I am not anti-union. I come from a union family. I know the importance and the gains that unions have made in this country, and it's my hope that as we move forward, we can have a dialogue, we can have mutual understanding, and we can hopefully in the next round of negotiations come to a place where the employees are accepting of whatever contract that we can devise with them and that we have something that is economically sustainable for the city as well. Because that bottom line, that's our primary responsibility as a city council, is to make sure that whatever we do in terms of payment, whatever we do in terms of our employee groups is sustainable for the people that those employees are serving. Because if we can't do that, we can't have the employees, and that doesn't benefit anybody. Sorry that the settlement offer wasn't accepted. As we've shown, that settlement offer really would have saved the city no money, would have gotten some gains for the employees, but that offer was rejected, which is a shame. And the deal that's now on the table is a worse deal for the employees, but it was our last best and final offer. I do hope we can move forward. I hope that, you know, as Mr. Corona said, it's not the end, and I agree. I know he meant it as a threat, but I would like to see it more as a positive, that we'll continue the dialogue and hopefully come to terms. And I hope that our employees realize that we do recognize the good work that they do, and I hope they continue to do that excellent work that they do for the community. Thank you.
Who's next? Okay, Mr. Sananian.
Now I'm in a different position than my colleagues on the dais in the sense that I wasn't part of the city council during the two years during which these negotiations were taking place with IBW. I definitely agree that it's unfair, fundamentally unfair, to be even talking about raises at a time when every other labor group, every other employee has made some type of sacrifice, financial sacrifice, some type of a concession, and it's also unfair to our residents, because any increase will have to be paid by the residents. And at this time, I just, I don't see how that's feasible. However, it's a very crucial decision, and again, although I see the results and I think the offer that's being made is a, the offer that was being made by the city was a very reasonable one, I wasn't part of the process, so just because of that reason, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Understood, understood. Mr. Cantaro.
For me, this is going to be a very difficult vote, and let me say that I wasn't surprised when IBW began to represent the GWP employees. I'd certainly heard enough complaints throughout the years from the employees, and I was never satisfied with the management of GWP. That however has changed since Steve Zern has taken the helm, and I have the utmost confidence in that gentleman, and I know that he will put GWP and head it in the right direction. He'll put it where it should be, just like he did at Public Works, so I'm very confident in his ability. The IBW, I respect everything that they do for their membership. Their task is to represent their members, both in terms of finances and in terms of safety, and I think they do an excellent job of doing that. I hope they continue an open dialogue with Mr. Zern and with our Human Resources Department, but there's just no way at this point in this financial setting that I can do anything other than to implement the contract, and that's exactly how I'll be voting tonight.
Thank you. Okay, for my comments, I spent 37 years in civil service work. I started with the city of Los Angeles Public Works Division Bureau of Engineering back in the early 60s. And even when I was there, in that portion of the city, we were told how the DWP was a level above us in terms of pay, even then. They always have been, almost an entity unto themselves. I never understood that. They have engineers, I'm an engineer, what's the difference? Here I am in my 17th year on the council, I've negotiated countless contracts with all of our associations. But this is the first time I've had to deal with an association that has tried to hold its hostage and tell us we have to give them what they want rather than negotiate with reality. When previous city manager granted IBW the right to represent electrical workers after many years of trying to get into the city, and they tried for some years to try to represent, to get that foothold in, they finally did. And this is the result of them finally getting in. I'd be willing to bet that they promised, I hear about the safety issue, but I never heard about these safety issues to great, maybe Mr. Cantaro heard them more than I did, but I'd be willing to bet that they were told, "Don't worry, we're going to get you the same wages as Burbank and Pasadena and LA are getting, substantially bigger numbers." We've negotiated with all the other associations each year, in 2011, we negotiate them and all. But the reason that happened is because our workers in GCA, GMA, GPWA, and GFFA understood what the recession was doing to this city, and they understood what effect their leaving or going out on strike or anything would do to affect the services they were providing to the community. They were rational, they understood, and they gave and they're still giving. My heart goes out to them, because in all the years I served here, I never thought I would be taking away from our employee associations. But the problem is, the IBW just doesn't understand Glendale. I'm emphasizing that. They don't understand our mentality. We're the leaders in the state, if not one of the leaders, in BRRS, negotiation, in salaries, whatever. We're different than other cities. We're fiscally responsible and we're conservative by nature. And they don't get it. They said they weren't trying to intimidate us here tonight. Oh, come on. Downstairs yelling, outside yelling, what do you call that? And that, they say, "That's just the beginning. We're going to be here after we're all dead and gone, they're going to be here ramming us until they get the same pay in Glendale as LA." Well, I better be gone, because it's not going to happen on my watch. And as I learned back in the early 60s, DWP have historically thought they're different than everybody else. They were in LA, they still are in LA, they're pretty independent in Burbank too. But we're trying to educate those workers of Water and Power, that they are no different than our fire and police and hard-working city employees or the managers that are performing their duties on a daily basis. We're all part of a team, we all work together. You can't separate one group out. This deal, as far as I know, that they wanted was, what, somewhere around one and a half million dollars total or more. Now, how do you think we could negotiate a contract with somebody that we say zero and they're saying one and a half million? Where are you going to compromise? We compromised on a million, on 500,000. Every other association in this city would say, "Well, now that you gave to them, we want it. And what are we doing in the budget? We're just trying to stay balanced. Got hundreds of workers. We've done everything we can to keep this city above ground, yet we're being told throw it all aside because they want theirs." This isn't going to be the end. Future negotiations will come with the IBW. I'm going to sit through a couple more, I guess. But I'll tell you for the record, and I don't, I hope they're listening, as long as I'm a councilman here, I won't be willing to give away the taxpayers' money of this city to one group of city employees at the expense of all others. Absolutely unfair. And that group, IBW, ought to read the Daily News and the LA Times, news press and every other written media that has criticized them for what they have been able to accomplish. 15% pay raise they just got from LA over the last five years, it's in today's paper. 15%, while the economy has gone south in the same timeframe. Absolutely amazing. And the candidates for mayor say, "Don't worry, when they're elected, they'll negotiate with them." And what is the union saying? "Yeah, we'll negotiate, we're going to ask for more." After they give one and a half million dollars to one of the candidates. Oh yeah, a lot of logic there, a lot of sense. Sorry it isn't going to happen here, I hope. I have a lot of friends, I'd be in the electrical side, in the water side, I admire them greatly. They got to get reasonable and understand. I don't know where they live, maybe they don't live in this city, everything, they have a problem in their own city, but for those who live here, we're going to keep, try to keep your taxes and everything low as we can and continue to provide all the services you've grown to expect. I know this is falling in deaf ears probably, and one last thing I'd like to add. City's been here over 100 years, and I don't remember wholesale safety problems occurring all over the place, breaking down the lines, lawsuits for safety. I don't remember those. So these comments tonight just leaves me astounded. That, I'd like to take a vote on these issues and try to go out and have a decent night for the hours we got left. So would somebody like to move 8A, 1 and 2?
I'll move 1 and 2, Mr. ...
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Cantaro...
Yes.
Sananian...
Abstain.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Thank you all for, well, you're all gone, all at home. Okay, what's next? First speaker, Gray James, followed by Judy Lamb.
Mr. Mayor, you have to have the motion continuing 9A.
Yes.
Next item before, yes, just, we have one more item of business. Also on this agenda was a hearing that will be continued per direction from the council. At 9A was the Director of Public Works regarding, I'm sorry, Director of, I think it was Community Development, and I'm sorry for that, the correction not having been made, regarding appeal of Design Review Board, DRB case number 2PDR 1301725, for a property located at 2064 Buckingham Place. A1 is motion continuing the matter to a regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, May 14, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. without further public notice.
Second. A roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman...
Here, yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Cantaro...
Yes.
Sananian...
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. And now Gray James, followed by Judy Lamb.
Gray James, Glendale. Slides, first slide please.
Glendale's going to speak, please turn your cards now.
Last week, Speaker Tori alluded to this document. I am only here today to echo her sentiment. Second slide, please. Section 4, pages 37 to 39, is the section, cause for removal, suspension, and reduction... Section 4, pages 37 to 39, is the section "Cause for Removal Suspension and Reduction." It then lists a series of reasons for this to occur. Number 5 is dishonesty, like Mr. Sinanian is. Slide 3, please. Number 9, failure to treat other employees or the public with courtesy, respect, or dignity, like Mr. Sinanian did with the people of Glendale and fellow council members. Number 10, illegal political activity, like maybe getting elected to office via lies and fraud, like Mr. Sinanian did. Number 16, making false, vicious, or malicious statements, like Mr. Sinanian did against fellow council members and to the people he represents. Numbers 24 and 25, conduct that is inconsistent with the proper administration of the department in which the employees employed, or any conduct unbecoming an officer or employee of the city, which pretty much covers Mr. Sinanian's terms so far. Slide 4, please. I don't know if any of this applies to city council members, but why shouldn't it, or why couldn't it? So that when someone comments on one of Mr. Sinanian's many news stories, what do you expect? It's Glendale. Maybe we can endeavor to find a way to raise that level of expectation. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Lamb, followed by Faith Han Tarwanga.
I think this is the second time in my whole life I appear here. My name is Judy. I live in this city more than 30 years, and I just cannot hold on any longer, so I appear today, try to state my experience about the traffic. At the beginning, I heard about another, the councilman has been discussed about the traffic in Glendale. I don't know, I'm older enough, or too young to drive in City of Glendale, but I certainly scared to death to drive in Glendale. And I has been on a mega issue about the traffic in this city many times, to the police station, to the city or engineer, but, yeah, I did see special engineer department doing a very good job. Certain spot has been changing, but it's not quite, you know, the issue as what I expect. Okay, first, I observing the, this is lately I discovered, you know, the Grand Oak Boulevard is a big street, and it's more than eight lanes tottering on both sides. So I was trying to cross in on Pacific with Grand Oak, and the signal from the green light, when they just signal the green light, I walk, not even halfway through, it's a flash. After I, after the flash finish, I still in the middle of the other side, which mean, you know, it turned red already, so I haven't crossed, crossed over the crosswalk. I think I'm quite healthy at this time, but I don't know in the future. But if I could not cross over, I don't know what the other people can cross over, especially the oldest one and the younger children, or the handicapped person. I really like to bring the attention to the engineer try to improve with the signals, signals light. I tottering estimate, I did watch my watch, it's 30 seconds from the green light until the red flash die finish. It's only 30 seconds, and I haven't finished crossing, you know, the side cross. So I really like to have this improved, and see this one change in the futures, considering for all the human means. That's the first point. The second one is, you know, the accident happened in Glendale, and it seems like the councilmen say it's not improved, really, for lately it's getting worse, if you can see. Personally, I do have a couple incidents, accidents in Glendale, and the people nowadays try to protect themselves by telling a lie, and I've been through with that. And also, unfortunately, if you have only liability insurance without cover the comprehension, there's no way you can get the loss be covered. And the driver who is recognized in a hurry, they just get away from that. And I believe that's the reason why we cannot improve the traffic in Glendale. And I really like the police station, all the councilmen can do something about it to improve our traffic in Glendale. And I hope everybody, you know, really considering, if you, like you say you haven't seen improve, should we organize our, you know, forming a group from the citizen, everybody, to, you know, impose the idea and try to improve? And I believe when I call in, city engineer do answer to me, because we have so many cars, so we had to be kind, like, let the car go through, and there's not a reason. I believe human mean life is still more important than whoever any the other business they're talking about. And let me tell you, when I, in this section, I overheard about the department for each one, I do understand economy is very terrible nowadays, but I do really appreciate, you call the GWP, that department, from my experience, is working very well compared with the other department. For example, when I call them have any question or any service, they respond to my call within the days, but the other apartment, Park Recreation, or the police station, anything, they don't return your call at all. And I just tell you my experience, and I do appreciate the department of Glendale Power Water Department. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, you crossing Pacific Street?
Yes.
At what intersection?
Grand Oak.
Glen Oaks and Pacific, thank you, we'll look at it.
Thank you, and same situation on Brenham Central, too.
Thank you.
But I, Pacific is the one.
Okay, Faith Han Tarwanga. Must have messed up her name so bad she left. Well, Alek Baruslov. I'm sorry, I mess your name up every time.
It's okay, my name is Alek Baruslov. I just wanted to, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I wanted to echo Mr. Sinanian's concerns about safety in the city. In addition to the ones that he mentioned, there was another incident in the valley earlier last month. David Grenados was killed in a hit-and-run. He was riding his bicycle on the sidewalk and was killed. He was 18 years old, and he was about to graduate high school, from Grant High School later this month. And this is a serious issue in the city of Glendale. We all know that we are notorious for the streets of Glendale. There are accidents that happen all the time, some are fatal, some are, result in serious injuries. I went to the scene where Jonathan was killed over the weekend, and there was a letter that was left there near the ghost bike, and I just want to read it to you, because it struck me on so many levels, and I think we should all be aware of it. It says, "Dear to whoever it may concern," I think this was written by a child, "life seems to be given and taken for granted. We seem to be in charge of everything around us, except living through the moment. Living in a place where we are constantly thinking about the past and the future, as we almost fail to realize that we're alive. We, as a community, have been segregated by the streets, by our race, and our minds, when in fact it should make us stronger. Death shouldn't be the only reason why we reunite as one. Personally, I don't know or even met Jonathan, but that doesn't mean, or even give me an excuse of why I can't help. The more older I get, the more caring I get. My heart was once as cold as ice, but now it's as warm as the sun. We have all, we all have the power to help and heal one another in many ways. I choose to heal my community by writing this letter and being in full support until the situation calls upon me to leave. Jonathan left us physically, but spiritually, he will eternally be and live with us inside in our hearts. Honestly, I'm sad and tired of witnessing many tragedies and casualties, and I can't take it anymore. I'm going to change the world by first changing myself. Jonathan was always an enlightened human, and now he's a beautiful angel watching over the world, especially his family and friends. This isn't the end, but merely the beginning. As somebody who works for the LA County Bicycle Coalition, this happens far too often. I think we need to learn from cities around us, like the city of Los Angeles, that are implementing their Bicycle Master Plan, incorporating more than 50 miles of bike lanes on a yearly basis. I think that we need to get started on that here. We have a Bicycle Master Plan, it was adopted not too long ago. I haven't seen much as far as implementation goes, so I hope that you take this seriously, consider this a safety improvement, and no longer take the convenience of drivers at the expense of safety for pedestrians, drivers, and cyclists, as we have in the past. With the improvements that are happening downtown, we're going to get thousands of new residents. Many of them are going to be walking on the streets, they're going to be riding their bikes, they're not going to be driving their cars as much as they used to. There are national trends that show that vehicle miles traveled since 2004 has dipped every single year per person. There are trends that show that people in the 18 to 34-year age range are not having driver's licenses at the rate that they used to. People are looking for alternatives, and we need to provide safe modes of transit for those people. And we can't do that in the city right now, as it is, because it's very dangerous. I hope that you do something about it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Cantaro?
You said that the bicyclist was hit on the sidewalk, so the vehicle actually jumped the curb and killed.
With the case of David in the valley?
Yeah.
He was in the intersection as he was riding through the sidewalk. He was in the intersection when he was hit.
Okay, and it's not the vehicle jumped the curb?
No, not, the driver was not proceeding onto the sidewalk.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammann. Well, you've already had a busy day, so, but anyway, here I am, my name is Margaret Hammann, as I said, and I've been a citizen of this city for 54 years. I came from a big city, and I thought this city was the most wonderful place to live. It was like a small town. It was like I couldn't believe. But anyway, it's changed a lot. Part of our very good services that we have in our city is the free bulky item pickup, which is 818-548-3916. Now, the trash, there are, there is several couches that have been laying around on the street. I don't know why people will not call, but now with the rain, they're going to be rotten and falling apart and so forth. And I have brought this up before, and I feel that it's a good idea, but they keep telling me no, or I was told no, that I don't understand why it isn't a good idea for the regular trash pickup trucks, employees, when they see those items there for weeks at a time, why can they not call them in and ask for them to be picked up? They can see that it's a problem, that nobody is calling them in, and, you know, having this service makes Glendale the special quality of life place to live. And of course, as I said, I love Glendale, and I don't see why we can't have either that, call in or have an employee that could perhaps patrol the problem areas where there are a lot of these apartments. 49% of the city is below Colorado and below. That is where apartments are, where people throw their junk out, and maybe they're not aware, or they don't care, to phone and have it picked up. For the rest of us who have to drive through it, it's really heartrending to see our city ruined by this unending trash. And then, the other thing is about the bicyclists. I have had several experiences with them, that they ride on the sidewalks, and they seem to go from being pedestrians to suddenly being motorists and go through intersections where they, you know, should be stopping the same as regular traffic. I think that maybe they need some more safety training with those bicycle riders, I really do. And by the way, the Glendale Historical Society, on Sunday, we opened up one of the jewels of the city, the Doctor's House, up in Brenham Park, when the, what is it, the hiking groups were up there, there were over 600 people, and handed out water and refreshments, and got about 200 people coaxing in, so to speak, to go on free tours of the Doctor's House, which is terrific. And a lot, a lot of what I said to the people, or to a lot of people, was, "This house belongs to you. This is part of our heritage of Glendale. Come and see it, how beautiful it is, how beautifully it's done. We have Victorian wedding dress exhibit on right now." And people were really drawn into it, even people from out of the city were very interested in going through the house and enjoying it, and came out absolutely, so many of them said, "I can't believe it, it's really a fabulous place." And the people of the historical group, they were there from, I don't know, 8 o'clock in the morning, I wasn't, I didn't get there till 10:00. But anyway, by then, they were all coming back down the hill from there, struggling down the hill, straggling down the hill, from their hike up the mountain. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Living in Glendale is a wonderful place to live, and I'm going to keep saying it. Thank you.
Thank you, that's my last oral communication. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I have to make a comment?
Yeah, you're supposed to do it when they get up. Is it unheard, what she said?
No, but I didn't realize we had to make it then, I'm just to make.
Yeah, well, that's the way I'm doing it. They speak, just go back on it before they can walk out the door.
Well, it's not really directed to anyone in particular.
Go ahead, just.
Okay. I wanted to just comment on the couple of comments that we had about traffic safety. Certainly, this is one of the biggest challenges in the city, one of our biggest problems in the city. The death that happened last week was very tragic, and I applaud Ms. Sinanian's suggestion of donating money towards the previous accident in Griffith Park and finding the person who committed that crime. But I also agree with one of the speakers that we really need to commit completely towards implementing our Bicycle Master Plan, and also the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, and that the only way to really address this is to really commit to that as a council, to fully fund it, to make sure the implementation happens quickly, to continue to address our traffic issues on all the levels that we need to address, and this council has done that for many years. Mr. Najarian has certainly done quite a bit in terms of traffic safety in the city, and we need to continue on that path. But implementing those two plans in particular are important. And Ms. Hammann's correct, that education is a big part of it as well, and making sure that everybody is educated, motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists, all users of the road. The Walk-Bike Glendale Group, which is a great group, has been going into our schools and doing free bicycle classes for the students, which is very well needed, and I would love to see us as a city partner with them in the school district and try to expand that program, because that's something that really needs to continue and needs help from us. So I just wanted to say that giving the money is great, but we need to do a lot more, and we need to make sure that we commit to those plans. And on that end, I would love to see quarterly updates from the city about the implementations of both of those plans and any of our other traffic calming and safety. I'm not saying right now, but it would be great to see how, what the progress is, what the plans are for implementing those plans, how we plan on doing that, and making sure the public understands the progress. Okay? Thank you.
Now, can I have a motion to adjourn in the memory of Mr. Fernandez?
Jonathan. So moved.
Okay, stand adjourned.